Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. And the first thing we're gonna do is roll call. And Toni Corpe?
Here.
Bruce Ravewing? Absent Roxanne Scootstedde dich here. Jennifer Baker?
Here.
Emily McGonigal, absent. Ted Saxton?
Here.
Joanne Smith?
Here.
Kevin Grover?
Here.
Mitch Erickson?
Here.
Okay, let's all stand for the pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And the first item is approval of the agenda as presented. Could I have a motion?
I'll move, Joanne.
Second.
Second by Jen, all those?
Hang on, I got a couple things, just give me a moment. A couple things, just in case there was a 1S, the hire of Eric Olson, I'll talk about it, had to be added back on here. So that was added late this afternoon, you might not have seen. And I would also like to add, under action items, I'm gonna call it a 1C, and would like to say, discussion with possible action on payroll clerk position. I don't know if we'll do anything, but I want to update to where we're at, that's this document, so.
And that'll be after 1B.
After 1B, under action items. So if Joanne is okay, and Jen, that made the motion, second, I would ask.
Anything else? Anything else, Kevin?
No.
Okay, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And now, we, the next thing we have is the ELTS Student of the Month. And you're gonna do that, so we will, yeah, go ahead.
One of the November ELTS Students of the Month is Olivia Line. Olivia Line is one of the ELTS Lodge 1599 Students of the Month for November. Olivia is the daughter of Carla and Ben Line. Olivia participated in college and the school program by taking college English as a junior and senior, along with college math and history courses. She balanced out her high school repertoire with family and consumer science courses, CAD 1 and 2, journalism, and sign language to set her up for future endeavors. Olivia is Minnesota Honor Society member, and currently the historian. She has been a football and hockey cheerleader for the past three years. She loves volunteering whenever she can, and looks forward to meeting new people and making connections. I will attest, she has decorated more bulletin boards and made more signs than many staff to make the school a more festive and welcoming environment. Olivia, being a teacher's kid, has had the honor of assisting, or some would say being all untold, to help with probably more things than she would ever have imagined for the betterment of the high school again. Always with a smile on her face. Ms. Simon said, "I only have three expectations for students in my classroom, to be productive, to be respectful, and to be kind." Olivia Line is a perfect example of someone who has all of those characteristics built in. Olivia is attentive, loves to learn new things, and never hesitates to lend a helping hand to her peers when they need it. Outside of school, Olivia enjoys being with friends and family, crafting, and quilting. She will be attending the University of Minnesota Duluth in the fall, and major in social work with a minor in psychology. She can't wait to be involved in as much as possible. Olivia Line, ELTS Student of the Month for November. Katyn Son is the other one, and was not sure if he could be here tonight or not, so I said he can't, because he has hockey going on. We'll do him next month, so if we can just pause for a second.
Yep, we'll do a pause for the photo. And now, we have public open forum. Anybody here for public open forum? No, okay. And now, the consent agenda. Okay, yes.
I'll move on the consent agenda.
Sorry, I'm last on this new parental.
You just need a motion, so Joanne made a motion, and just second.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Okay, so just a couple notes. If you see 1G, unfortunately, there's not enough participants or students for a GAV program for girls hockey. So we are, we will not have a JV program, you know, this year. It's not discontinued forever, but I just wanted it record-wise noted. Number, item 1K, Brittany Foss is being hired. That's the replacement for Terry Mason that left, just so you're aware. And then, the one right below it, Chelsea Nest, has taken Brittany's spot. So that explains those. And then, the last one, 1S, the, I'm gonna say, rehire of Eric Olson. Bill had gotten word from the head coach that Eric was leaving town, and so he, we accepted a resignation last month. He hadn't put it in writing, and now he's not leaving, so he's still with the program. So, good lesson learned, if it's not in writing, even though the head coach said we need to get someone. We did an interview, so that's, Eric was hired prior, so he's still there. So, unless you have questions, those are my notes.
Okay. We have a second, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passed. Now I have to jump down to the action items. And under these, the new items that are underlined on our agenda are related to the strategic plan. So we're trying to put under what category each one of our activities that we're doing and discussing is under. So the first one is under improving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcome and supported. And that is the resolution that says, "Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district, whereas the IFALZ School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district, whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or devise of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of IFALZ Public Schools 361 accepts the following with appreciation, the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district." Now, did I do the motion already? Yeah, okay, could I have a motion to bring these through? Some of, okay, and then, we're going to list them. Then we're gonna have a second. So, the list is Bronco Hall of Fame, Susan and Stuart Norquist, $1,000; True Star, $500; Jacqueline and Dean Blaze, $500. Football donations, Rainy Lake Medical Center touchdowns and turnovers, $1,000. Bronco football boosters, field care and charter bus, $924.56. Ekman GMC touchdown donation, $700. Bronco baseball boosters, field fertilizing, $318. Bronco swim boosters, girls' section swimsuits, $1,778.94. And now, could I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Joanne, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now, I gotta follow this agenda again here. Okay, under item 2, and the strategic plan section would be maintaining our facilities to be.
You skipped, there's actually B, there's gonna be a B and a C.
Oops, 1B, sorry. Not, still, under the same strategic plan section, under 1B, notice offer of a subsequent contract to Superintendent Kevin Grover as required under Superintendent Contract 4, Section 2, Subsequent Contract. Subsequent contract provisions are to be negotiated. Could I have a motion for that?
I'll move.
Second.
All those?
Hang on, just so everyone's aware, there's a section in my contract that, if I give notice in, I think it was by the end of October, by the end of November, beginning of December, the board has to act to either let me know that they're gonna or not give me a contract. This is not the contract itself. If you want me to leave, and as you discuss, or something, I'm more than happy to. If it does pass, then we go into negotiation and actually work on a contract. So, I guess I'm asking, before we go further, do you want me to leave for a bit to discuss, or?
Anybody asking for Kevin to leave the room?
Give it to me, or you can leave.
No.
No, I'm okay with that.
We're all okay.
Then go forward.
Alrighty, now, I need to have a motion.
There is a.
I had a motion, I need a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, now we're gonna jump down to 1C.
And I can start, if you want, because there's nothing here. So, as you're aware, I talked with you last, at the last board meeting, we offered the payroll position to a couple people. We posted, interviewed, and unfortunately, neither of the people accepted. So we had reposted, again, they went through interview process, and offered to one or two, it's a total of four people, two more people.
Five, we interviewed five, we offered?
Offered to first person, turned it down. Offered to a second, turned it down. And so, we're back to the table now, either looking for direction. So what I've done is, I included a sheet at the table here. And it's not that we have to do anything tonight, but I'm gonna ask that we get a plan here. So, right now, we're talking the payroll, personnel payroll clerk down on the bottom, or the second to the bottom. That is, if we go under 7122, starting pay of 2066, last step is 2513. If you flip to the next page, these are a bunch of schools that submitted information, you know, on similar, can't say they compare apples to apples, but, you know, states put out a request saying, hey, what are other places paying? You know, and again, every position is not exactly the same, but it gives you some ideas. There's places that are paying less, there's places that are paying more. You know, for instance, we're listed on the top, are arranged there. I'm just gonna read a few here. You know, like Chadfield, they start at 1990 and go up to 2778, so they start a little lower, go a little higher. And again, some are big schools, some are small schools, this just who submitted. Pillinger, 2548, they don't, you know, that's where they're at. So they're on the higher end, they're above us. La Crescent, very similar, 2568. Masaki East, definitely higher, 2630 to 3148. Fillmore Central, 25 bucks. Morris, they're, they just gave a, like, salary or the end amount, just about $60,000. McCray, 2025, so I'm gonna say on the lower end. And again, you can look through them, there's ones higher, there's ones lower. For the most part, and again, I'm not gonna speak for the four people, it was no advantage, you know what I'm saying? Most people, if they're taking a new job or looking for something, either more paid, or there's some benefit that is, you know, better. And for the most part, they were fairly similar. Now, there are some other people that we did make offers to that I'm gonna say might be good employees. They just didn't have, what we were gonna say is, the payroll skills. You know, not that they couldn't learn, but we were looking for some people that could hit the ground running, so to speak. And, you know, and so, I guess what I'm looking for is either some direction, you know, you giving us, you know, the ability to add more money to a position, or do you want a subcommittee of the board to meet and come up with a plan? But whatever's gonna happen, we wanna move, I mean, we don't wanna raise a whole nother level. And if we're gonna, you want a subcommittee to, you know, come up with an idea, I would ask that we set a, you know, special meeting a week down the road, or something to, you know what I'm saying? Improve something, because I know we're just dropping this on. But I think we're gonna have to, I guess, my opinion is look at adding some money to the position.
Did, so all of the, oh, I'm sorry, Ted, you're first. Okay, so did, did it seem like when you interviewed, all the people? I was trying to go through all this at the same time, so you may have said it, but did all the people say, they, because the pay wasn't good enough, that's probably why they turned them down?
I was not in on the interviews, and so I might have confirmed a statement.
Do you know what the indication was?
They were all either making what we started at, or were making a little bit more than what we started. And we are very, trying to be very transparent. This is not, and we didn't want to scare individuals, but we also want to be very transparent. And this is a big payroll, so it isn't, it's a solid eight-dollar, we're working. You know, so, we didn't want somebody to take it, misinterpreted that maybe it would be a lower-key job, or, you know. We're moving, my business office moves, we don't sit.
So do you think that's what it was, more than the pay?
I don't know that it was so much that. The one candidate from the last interview, I would have loved to have had her. I think it was pay, I think it was, she didn't really say, but I think, callers. You know, people don't wanna lose their good employees, either. So, but yes, I think some of it is, is after they sit with us and find out what is all involved in the job. And the learning curve, I mean, we're talking a year before you are, if you are walking in, longer if you're walking in without any experience.
Keep in mind, I mean, I don't know where we are, you know, city, county-wise, we're a large employer, you know, and it's one person doing the whole payroll.
Right.
It is, you know, payroll benefits.
And so, we just, we try to be, and I don't think they'd let, you know, I don't think they'd let scare or anything, but we wanted to be, you know, very understanding that it's an $8 million-plus payroll. It's big, and we are probably the second or third employee. So, we want, somebody wants to come and work, and work hard, and have a fast day, and your day goes fast, and you're at the school. There are some benefits, but on paper, all of them we're making at what we were really offering. Even with the state retirement, it wasn't worth the takeoff pay.
In the second go-around, we put the salary on.
Yes.
You know, and so, I mean, it's not the people that know, but whether they're not quite sure they apply, or they're using it as a bargaining chip. You know, going back and going, hey, Rox, I'm looking at you, and I got an offer, you know, and I'm not saying there aren't businesses that maybe have given someone money, but, I mean, that doesn't, you know, we're in a tough spot. Like I told you last month, we compared to a couple other businesses in town, even looking at here, you know, we're not completely out of the ballgame. You know, some we are, some we're right in line, you know, but the reality is, we need to get someone. Unless someone has a better idea.
What do you suggest? Like, how much do you feel is adequate?
I mean, looking at this, I mean, just say you added, and again, I'm gonna add two bucks to the hourly wage. You know, that's about four grand, 2,080 hours, so that's a little over four grand. It's still not gonna put you at the top of the sheet. But the other thing that I'm gonna tell you is if you do it for the payroll position, you better look at the other positions, because the comparable comes payroll. For instance, she turned an offer down from an employer in town, it was more money to start with. You know, and so that if we don't treat, I'm gonna say, the business office.
But how many people do we have in the business office that we need to look at?
Well, I think you're gonna have to look, and again, that's why I'm gonna say, I gotta be careful, because obviously Stacy's involved. I mean, you have four people in there. You have Stacy, Kendra, this new person, and Michelle Hopkins. Because, you know, you raised one.
So then, if you're looking at it, and even if you don't go, say, you went two, and you didn't have to go quite two for the others, it's still that, it might be like eight bucks more an hour for everything.
Oh, correct, it's gonna, it's gonna add up to a chunk. And, you know, again, I'm not, you know, but, and I guess where my thought is, I'm thinking if there could be a couple people, and just ask them, you know, to sit down, let's come up with a plan. If we can try going back to our number one candidate, number two, see if we get somewhere. If that happened, I would like to call a special board meeting then, because I don't want someone quitting their job. You know, me saying, hey.
You mean going back to them with a raise?
Correct, and seeing if we can get, you know, get them, just say, again, and just throw it out there, say we throw out a buck, throw out two buck, or see where we can get what it would take. Now, this guy's not doing it, I mean, we can't pay another $30,000 for this position. You know, but if we can get something, then we know how it would affect our other positions, and say, hey, could we come back together next Monday? We need a board meeting, either approve or not, and then let this person go, you know, go tell their employer, whatever. We wouldn't talk that person's name, and that need, it's just, I need permission. You know, I know it's gonna be supportive before, I'm just, I'm using Joanne as an example, I have her quit her job, and then find out at the December meeting, the board doesn't approve.
So, is this person starting out at level one, no matter what? Or based on their experience, are they?
Depending on who, we could give some experience, but even right now, in the experience, you know, looking at, we didn't offer everyone the starting at the top.
Oh, okay.
But, you know.
I was gonna say, like, if you offered, you know, if you offered her, since she has experience, like, level three, well, that would be 22 versus $20 an hour, so.
Can I say something? It's a good question, and it would be Kevin's decision. I would not do that again, I did that the last time. And it causes hardship within the organization.
You would not do what?
I wouldn't give somebody experience.
What happens, when you have a small department, let's just say, you give one person experience, and you don't enough. Now with teachers?
Right.
It isn't fair. You know, people come in, Rox can attest, probably some get credit, some don't. It's kind of a supply and demand thing. But the tough part, we went through this with two other employees in the business office, when, you know, someone, no, because we had people, you know, then you gave the next person, you know, three steps, and it just, it created.
Yeah, I agree.
But not, so we can't, it's our choice, and we're gonna have to, I mean, it's a negotiate here, and see what it takes to get someone. And that's where I guess I would like some, like, say, whether a couple people from the board sit down, and we come up with a plan, what we think we can do, and then we go and try and get a person. And maybe the first one won't take, you know, but we have several good candidates, but see what we can get to.
We better get to Ted, because he's not here for long, and he really wants to speak.
No, it's fine, I don't know if there's still batteries in this thing, it's been on for a while, waiting. So, the idea of this committee is to move fast, right? If it's moving fast, I'd be interested in being on it, and thinking that, you know, we could bring a recommendation to the board within, you know, one meeting. But it's kind of interesting that, you know, some of the business people from town are here tonight, too, because the employment situation in town is ridiculous. And it's skilled labor issue, and there's two different classes. There's the non-benefit jobs and the benefit jobs. So, this is a benefit job, and in this town, that, you know, means a lot more than, like, for instance, somebody who, my technicians don't have health insurance, you know, so it's a different, I have to attract a different, you know, leverage different things there. And so, my, I guess what I'm trying to say is that everybody right now is experiencing the same conventional way of, kind of, we need to do raises, and I, I think, and I don't know if other employers, a lot that I've talked to have said this, but like, their average wages are now at $5 pre-pandemic, just across the board in the private sector. But the catch is, we just raise rates, right? Like, it gets passed on to the customers. You don't have, you have customers, and you can't raise rates, right? So you can only recruit more people, or eliminate costs, which is kind of the irony of it being in the business office, right? You know, so, I guess, that's why I wanna be on the committee, because there might be something unique that we haven't thought of there yet. But I don't know how, I know, like, what our balance sheet is right now, and it's like, how do we give anybody a raise, you know, so.
But the reality is, we're.
You need somebody in that position, so.
You know, we're gonna figure some things out, I mean, we're fine, but it's gonna take some creativity in the next year, you know. But as far as moving forward, my plan would be to meet in the next day or two.
Yeah.
Try and get a plan put together, try and have some conversation, and hopefully, I'm gonna say by mid-next week, have another meeting. With hopefully, here's what we need, you know, because we just.
Right, because you want, I understand you to say that you would like to have a, an okay to hire someone next month. You're hoping someone will take the job by then, right?
I hope to, if, just say Ted, and whomever else would be interested, we have a conversation the next couple days, get a plan put together. Here's what we're gonna offer, here are a couple options. We would then go back to our first candidate, if you will, number one, try getting the person to, you know, accept something. And then, if that, we got to that point, if it doesn't with the first person, we'll probably go to the second person, you know, but get someone hopefully to accept, and then say, okay, Rox, can we set a meeting for next Tuesday? Or Monday, or Wednesday, or whatever, so that, again, their name won't come out yet. Bring it to the board as a whole, yes, you'll approve, a buck seventy-five an hour raise, or whatever it is. Then we go back to the person and go, I got this approved, I can guarantee you, you know, as much as I can, you'll be approved, we want you.
Okay, I'll be on the committee, too. Anybody else have anything to say, discuss?
Anybody else have done paid wages lately?
I do, and I'm telling you, it's killing me.
Yeah, I know, I know we've talked about it before, but.
If you need a third person, that can help.
It's up to, I mean.
That sounds good to me, like, it's okay with Rox.
Perfect, that's all we need, we don't need.
Stacy, did you have something else to add?
No, I'm good, I was just.
Okay. Joanne, did you have anything?
No, please.
Okay. So here we go, now we're on.
Thank you.
After 1C, now we're on 2. The next order, item on the action agenda, under maintaining our facilities to be welcoming, safe, and efficient for use by students in the community in our strategic plan, we have to approve a contract with Liquid Networks to purchase Fortinet endpoint protection for one year for 365 days, and support contract for one year at a license cost of $13,140. Do I have, do you, would you like to, do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, do you wanna discuss any of that?
Do you want a second, and then I'll discuss.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, just so the group, it's 365 devices, just so you're aware, this is coming from, it's one of the major recommendations from our cyber situation, which I'll talk a little bit more about here in a few minutes. But this is the number two thing that they recommend. And number one being, then we get some more education on, and Ted can write out more than I can do this, but the number one issue is typically human error when it comes to cyber attacks, doing things you shouldn't do. So we have some training coming forth, because we don't have a good training program. But number two was, we don't have what they call endpoint protection, which is mainly, and it's monitored, watching our devices, looking, and again, I'm not the tech guru, and I maybe should add Mike here, but there were about eight things that was, were high recommendations. They know we can't do them all, okay, and I'll talk more. But this was number two, that if you can do anything, the education is coming free. There's some groups that do it for the school districts free. This is where they said, put your money, get stuff, get someone monitored, so that you can see when things are, I'm gonna say, going, I'm gonna say, awry, if that is. There's some other things, like, say, to-place authentication, which is in the process of coming, not only on email, but also on teacher computers. Schools are a little tougher to place authentication.
Multi-factor.
What?
Multi-factor.
Yeah, what did I say?
Two.
To-place.
I'm gonna say multi-factor, um.
Sorry.
No, I shouldn't say no one's figured out, but to get students, that's a whole nother network, because, you know, you can't assume everyone has a phone, that's what multi-factor does, is like, biolog into Google, it's a new device. It says, wow, how are you gonna do that with kids? So they're focusing on employees, but there's still a big network, you know, of kids that. So, anyway, that's what this is.
And that's gonna be more money, right?
Correct, it's not something we have, but the other piece being is, if we, I'm just gonna be honest with our cyber insurance, with this being the number one, other than the education piece recommendation, With this being the number one, other than the education piece recommendation, we're gonna have to have it, you know. And so we're moving forward and like I say, there'll probably be a few minor other things, but we'll talk about that down the road.
And our premium will go up. In addition to that, our premium for cyber insurance is gonna go up.
It's hard to say. Our, our, our incident is very minor.
Okay.
Everybody's insurance rate is going up for cyber insurance.
Mine doubled.
Nationally, so.
But cyber wise.
Regardless of this.
You know, according to them, I mean ours, I mean, we're in the ballpark of it's gonna be a two hundred thousand dollar bill, which again is not small. But most of them are huge, you know, so.
I gotta, I feel that I should have asked questions about this prior to this meeting, the specific one. So I will keep my questions brief. The first one is the vendor, Liquid Networks, where do they have?
Okay, the Fortinet, I don't know if you.
I know, I know all about Fortinet.
We got four, we got four quotes, okay, just so you're aware. This Liquid, Fortinet sells to, I'm gonna say providers. This is who they set us up with. I don't know much.
So it came from Fortinet?
Correct.
They give you a.
Fortinet is the one that we're getting the free education, they actually do it at schools. We had, and I did bring it with us, is it Solus? We had a group with Sentinel One and I forget.
Excuse me, if someone could mute their Zoom.
I wanna let's do it.
We're hearing somebody.
Go ahead.
So is the plan, and so I guess we're approving this, right? Is there a plan to approve endpoint protection? Or is it also the data networks, is that authentic Liquid Networks, whatever the name was, always my thing? Are they segmenting and programming it as well? Or will that be, that's not gonna be Mike?
No, they're gonna get it all set up and they actually, it's twenty, it's twenty, the license is twenty-eight dollars a device and it's eight dollars a year for the monitoring and the management, if you will, of it.
Does that come with the Sentinel One subscription for endpoints?
No, did, no, Fortinet.
Yeah, and so sometimes there's something called XDR and they work together often. So sometimes you buy your endpoint protection from your firewall people.
Okay.
Like that's why I'm just curious.
No, Fortinet has a different firewall, fairly inexpensive. We're actually looking at the one other piece that is a decent recommendation, but it's fairly inexpensive. I don't know a price yet, but is a firewall for the email. You know, and again, Google supposedly is pretty good, but again, it was another recommendation because that's a major spot. You know, email, I guess is a major, you know, spot for jump coming through. And so they would like another, I'm just calling another wall in between what Google has. And, you know, that's really what we have, is the Google firewall for email. And so we're probably gonna, but I'm thinking it's a couple of thousand bucks, you know, when they say it's pretty inexpensive, that's just a guess.
Whatever, I guess this is less about that. How? I guess I'll email Mike later.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask you a question you can't answer, so.
But I'm gonna give you some more information on the whole deal here in my report.
And then my, my last thing is, did we receive multiple quotes?
Four.
We did receive four?
Yeah, then counting this one, there were three others.
All right, it just, in my opinion, it seems high, but if you got four quotes, then it's what it is.
Well, this is the cheapest.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get that you can get, you know.
Oh, yeah.
You can get everything, you know, but I just, without endpoint protection. So anyways, we can go on now. I'm good for this one.
Okey dokey, we had so much discussion, I forgot where we're at. Do we need, we got a second and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okey dokey, now we're gonna go back up to two. And under, on the strategic plan, under the category of maintain our facilities to be welcoming, safe and efficient for you.
No, that was. And just so you're aware, I figured maintaining equipment was the same ballpark. I'm just being honest, they don't sometimes fall facilities, equipment, I put it under their safety, so.
Yeah, you gotta find a category, I'm sorry, okay, we're under four D, oh, it's supposed to be three D. In, under the category of increasing family and community engagement and a student learning and school experiences through improved communication and collaboration. We are now at the item of discussing the approval of the snowmobile trail permit with International Voyager Snowmobile Club in Cooch County for the right-of-way snowmobile trail route on the school forest property. Could I have a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Just so the boards are aware, I'm guessing, because it was when I, it's been since I've been in this position. The Snowmobile Club came looking for the exact same thing, planning to put a trail through. We approved it. They never developed the trail. And again, if you want to ask, I'm sure they will give you a history. They came back and asked again and I think it'll, in fact, I'm positive it'll come through for issue. I did ask for some documentation from them because I was, wanted to make sure there's no liability and there is a statute that, you know, relieves us. So they would put the trail through and for the most part, we grant them access. There is an ability down the road if, you know, for some reason, you know, you developed that property and it didn't work, you could. We'd have to give them notice and they would go around, but to be honest with you, I think it only helps our area. We're gonna talk down the road, there is some timber that is getting close to being, in the ballgame of being ready to be logged. And when we do that, the money's supposed to go back into that property. And so at that point, we'd probably look and put some type of pavilion and I'm gonna say outpost facilities out there so that it's really usable if we want to take a group right now to go out there, what can you do, you know, when someone needs a facility other than have a cranium or someone put in temporary. So again, I'm sure there are some people in favor, some against. I'm gonna say I am, I guess, in favor, as long as it's, you know, treated right and you are protected, so.
Questions?
Questions, or if you have questions for any of the group.
Comments?
I don't have any.
I think it's great. Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you very much for coming.
Not used to people being here, not saying.
And you're more, you're more than welcome to listen to our reports, but if you do want to.
They are rather boring.
Or if you have something that you want to tell us, or you're good.
We were just here to support the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then once again, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Have a great evening, enjoy the holiday.
Thank you, you too.
Okay, we are now at the committee at administrative reports. Mitch Erickson, you got something to say?
All right, so I'm gonna give an update on student council, Cape and MHS activities. So student council, they did a carpal apple fundraiser for Swanky Gift Summary. We sold eighty-nine apples, so it was a really good fundraiser. So then he did everyone who bought and supported student council there. Cape advisor and Cape students participated in Halloween hallway trick or treat street, which was a great turnout and during Halloween there. And student council also did a, we did a food show thing, we walked around the houses at Halloween. We also planned dress up day contest on Halloween and one person from each grade won a prize. And so I think they got a donut or something, so, and just to get more school spirit in our school. Cape offered a training to administration and law enforcement on up-to-date laws about tobacco products within our school and community. Cape and student council will be participating in the Christmas parade this Friday. We're gonna be riding our float with student council and Cape and hoping to win. We're going to have turkey bingo on Wednesday at the end of seventh hour, just to promote some school spirit before they head off for the holiday. And MHS wise, we're doing a dress drive right now. And so if many girls are interested in getting a dress, go talk to Mrs. Line. They're doing a mitten drive and MHS is also decorating teacher doors right now. That's all I have, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Missy, do you have any reports for us?
See, our numbers are at four sixty-one this month, we were at four fifty-eight last month. We got two new fourth graders and we lost a fourth grader and then one of our fifth grade students is coming back, or came back. And then we just finished our first set of grade level progress monitor, progress monitoring data meetings from, using our FastBridge data. And those meetings were very productive. We had a lot of collaborative conversations surrounded about students, like individual students, based on the data that we received. So it was nice to have those conversations based on the data. And then December second, we have winter concerts for grades K through four. And we are still in need of para and teacher subs. We still do not have a lot of para subs on our sub list, nor teacher subs. So that makes it difficult, especially when we have our school-wide intervention groups running. We want to keep running those with fidelity and when we don't have staff, it makes it difficult.
Okay, any questions? No. Okay, thanks, Missy, Tim, your turn?
At the high school, we're at five nineteen, our enrollment, we're down five from last month. We have parent-teacher conferences scheduled for Wednesday, December fourteenth, from five to eight P M. at the high school for all students in grade six through twelve. We have a group of teachers meeting every Tuesday night, I guess we missed a couple, but for the most part, every Tuesday night discussing how we can implement a middle school concept in the high school for next year. We've kind of been focusing on the physical piece, how we can work to keep those students more separated from the older students. And we've also been talking about what we can do as far as in our systems and programming with those students to make it feel more like middle school. That kind of came out of the strategic planning over the summer. And right now, all winter sports are underway with the exception of boys swimming, which will officially begin next Monday.
Any idea why you lost the five students?
We have, I know we have one student who got a diploma. We have a student that went online. We had a student that moved and we may have one right now, I know we have at least one in treatment.
Okay. Tim, do you have any ALC updates? Just wondering.
The ALC, everything has been going really well over at the church. They've been really good to us and the kids really liked the move. Annie and Lori really enjoyed the move. They did a program for the students around Halloween and they did cookies and they did a program and they sang and it was, it was really neat. So they're gonna come back and do something, I believe they're gonna be doing something Wednesday and then again at Christmas. So they put a breakfast on for the kids here about a month ago. And we're looking at doing something around the holidays with our kids and maybe some members of the church because there is a kitchen downstairs. So right now, everything, the kids are happy over there, Annie and Lori are really happy and the people from the church have been, they're happy and everything is really working well right now.
And when you say they did a program at Halloween, I was talking to Annie and it sounded like, what you mean by they is that it's some of the church membership.
Correct.
That is doing, yeah, I heard they were doing some really good things.
They just love the kids there.
Yeah.
Two or a few different people from there and they love having them around.
Yeah. We really appreciate that.
Relaxed and really enjoying being there. And they've, actually at the breakfast, one of our students got up and spoke, no one knew they were gonna speak and they spoke and it was really awesome. They just talked about how comfortable and how appreciative they were to have a place like that, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we're very thankful to that.
Yes, yeah.
To that program.
Thank you.
Okay, and thankful to Faith United, I should say, I didn't say that right. Okay, Kevin? Do you have some other things?
Okay, yeah, just a few more things. First of all, on the cyber attack, for the most part, it has been determined, not exactly, there, well, there was an open port for a period of time. Making it human error is where quote unquote the hacker, hackers, whatever you wanna call it, the group found a way in. The blessing in disguise, it was caught very quick, as I told you. But again, very quick doesn't mean they were in our network for a while, not long enough, or at least they did pull the pin to encrypt, okay, which is a good thing. There's pros and cons. We know they were in some employee areas, okay, meaning payroll, you know, that type of area. So effective Wednesday, there are letters going out to, I'm gonna say, all employees notifying, and not just current employees, you know, going back as anyone that was in our system, notifying that we had this issue, so all of you are gonna get something. And they could have, you know, possibly accessed A, B, and C and here are some options, there's credit monitoring, this and that. There's no guarantee that they got any of it, but it's that, you know, there's reasonable, reasonably they could have. On the plus side, there is no reason to believe they got any student information, okay, which is a good thing. Now, there could be a few students that get letters that are employees, you know, like if, you know, I have a child that worked for the school three years ago or something, you know, that family could get a letter. But as far as student data, there are no letters or anything going out because they do not believe there's any chance, which is a good thing, as good as can be. And so, other than that, part of the process, they did do, like I say, this review, this analysis, came back with like a thirty-day, sixty-day, and ninety-day recommendations. And again, we've had a couple of good meetings. And they realize what schools are like, schools are different than businesses and schools, some things we can easily do, some things are gonna be challenging. And so they're giving us some recommendations, knowing that, you know, the sky is the limit, if you will. And they know we can't spend millions of dollars a year, you know. But on the other hand, they prioritized and that's what we're bringing to you. And there are some things that could take some time, like I say, to get there. Some things are, you know, just, I'm gonna say, things we can do without much cost. Other things like what you saw tonight are probably gonna be some ongoing costs in this day and age. And it's where we're at, so I guess I don't know if you have any, you call cyber attack questions before I.
I have something I wanted to say, but I wanna, I wanna preface it a little bit because this is, this is, you know, kind of what I do all the time. And for a lot of people in town, I just wanna say before I say what I have to say is that ever since we started doing business, we've tried to get away from doing business with the school because of myself being on the board and the board chair. And, and being the board chair for as long as I was and during a time where everything was digitized. We did buy a company that, you know, monitored the security system and we, and we recommended you go with a different company when that happened. So essentially, I believe, my business ended up with like no financial stake in, here in the last couple of years. And so I say that because I know exactly kind of like what you need and everything like that. But in the same sense with all the other stuff, I never asked too many questions for a fear of a conflict interest. However, like there's, there's a security risk still involved. So I, I know how, I know two hundred thousand is nothing. Like I, I have had a few claims way bigger than, you know, two hundred thousand, so that's relatively low that we've come into afterwards. None of mine have, you know, but looking at Rox, don't worry. But I've come into, in this community with local government, private sector, charities, I've come in and it's been way bigger than that. And you're right, this would, this, what we purchased tonight would have stopped if it was properly configured and monitored, would have stopped this. But my concern is that there's still, the biggest thing is still human error. The people that are sitting behind the computers and stuff like that. And we do manage security for other schools and, and I know how they're set up. And I want, what I'm trying to find out is, is there like, is there an actual written report? I don't, I don't wanna overstep, right, like at all, in a couple of months, it doesn't matter anyways. But is there an actual report that I can read? Is there, where we tracking, it's called S I E M. reporting? And of, of like, you basically track everything that you do. And you also, you know, Stacy probably knows more than anybody else in the school about the data privacy for the kids, right? And then also there's the data privacy for public employees, but there's also data retention for ya as well. And there's no way if all we're doing is buying a Fortinet, that we're even meeting any of those, like, it's not even close, so.
Six, hang on, not meeting once?
We're not, we're not meeting.
What would be the best practice for it?
Well, that's the problem is he's right, there's no money for all this stuff. So that's why, like, the other thing I was gonna say that I was gonna preface is when I got on the board, there was no financial, like, we had no technology plan. Like there was no money being put away or anything like that. So even how far we've come is huge from, you know, six years ago and before that, our bandwidth has increased so they can use the technology and stuff like that. But I don't know that if you're not doing like endpoint protection and different things, including active threat hunting, which is maybe. which is, uh, maybe, uh, that's, Huntress is a big name in that, um, that you pay for. And so I just, I, I can't see you're fully compliant or we're fully, I mean, it's me, I'm a part of this.
Well, we have to. Totally protected.
No, fully compliant. Protected is one thing. So like, if you're, if you're, uh, compliant, your insurance premiums go down, right? You can prove that. Um, offsite backup's a big one for things that matter. Um, but the, the, um, the complacency, if you're compliant, your insurance company doesn't care about anything else, right? Like they do care about your risk, but because all the appropriate things are protected in the appropriate ways and stored appropriately. And that's with all the different compliances. And that's why, um, we try to stay away from HIPAA things too, you know, and, and my business is because it's an extra layer of compliance. Um, and you might even have some.
Excuse me, do you, so before I forget, I just had to hold where you're going. Doesn't our insurance company already say, how are they, how are they talking to us? Cause I know I go through this with my group.
And that's what we're working through and, 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 you know, we had cyber insurance, you know? So again, I guess I'm gonna say, I think we're compliant. It's just, it is changing daily, if you will. And there's things that our insurance may require or another insurance may not, you, you know, but everything, like I say.
So all, all insurances now going forward, um, in the next couple of years, will all be on the same exact plan. And our same thing, because the industry changed so much that what happened during COVID is like this happened everywhere, right? And, um, and insurance rates went nuts because claims went high, right? And business, um, businesses were also struggling. You have more claims because all of a sudden a ten thousand dollar claim matters more, you're right, drove up the rates. But then what they did and, um, and I, I, I consulted with enough businesses with their cyber insurance, is they stopped saying like you should have this stuff and your rates go up. And now it's you have to have this or you're negligent, um, and we won't pay the claim next time because we've warned you. And so that's the next two years, every cyber insurance policy is gonna switch to that. So you're gonna have to start when I'm gone, you know, planning for that extra expense, which is, it's gonna really go up. But I mean, since I've been here, I mean, Hiving got hit and theirs was a lot worse than ours, you know, way worse. Um, I would probably say theirs was.
Colcade.
Yeah.
So our insurance company right now is saying, cause I know my insurance company had asked, I had asked Ted to write a thing that says, yeah, I had all my coverage. So is our insurance company?
We have insurance.
Yeah.
The, the question's gonna be when we come around renewal, you know, assuming.
Yeah, it's renewal is when they get to.
Oh, renewal. And, and so that's why, like I say, we're taking action. We're taking some steps forward. There were eight criteria that's recommendations from the analysis. Okay, we're gonna hit, I think, the top four to start with here and then we'll see as time goes on. Right? You know, and we've, we've had, insurance has been part of the conversation. They can't tell us even, you know, I mean, we're working with a broker for the most part. They can't guarantee what, you know, come, I don't even know if it's June when our renewal is, you know, where we're gonna be. You know, they're happy that we're moving forward, you know, again, we're, they're happy, we're, you know, anything you do to better position yourself is good. But I'm not gonna promise you anything right now, you know, but.
So everybody better be lobbying.
Well, you know, and like you say, there's certain things we're gonna have, the multi-factor authentication for employees. Okay, taken care of. They don't have a solution right now. I, I should say there isn't, but I mean.
But you can, you can do stuff to make it so kids can't do anything, right? You can limit guest access everything.
Well, but, but what I'm saying, that is the problem and no one has a great solution, you know, and that's because I brought it up. How do you do kids multi, you know, factor, you know, and they just went, it's not a requirement now. And I'm like, how's that not? I mean, if everyone isn't, but.
That'd be a huge difficulty, yeah.
It is, yeah. And, and so anyway, right now, we're fine, you know, but we're moving forward, like I say, doing some of the recommendations. And we'll see where we're at come renewal time.
So anyways, I guess the takeaway, sorry, the takeaway is when renewal time comes, like be prepared, it's gonna, it's gonna go nuts.
But I think even without, and again.
That, and not to do with the, the attack. I don't think that that'll have much to do with it, actually. I think you're just gonna have a huge renewal rate. Cause, um, it's churches and schools and CPAs. Those are the people who get attacked the most, so.
Okay, um, anything else on that right now? Okay, um, the September twenty first, I just put that in, just so you're aware, we did, I wanna say last week, have, finally have our meeting with law enforcement and all responding agencies. It was a good meeting, um, got some recommendations, had some good conversation. Um, again, um, I'm just saying, you know, we're, we're, we're learning and we're moving forward. There was some discussion, obviously, some things like some of the classrooms that got overlooked on the group, got a plan in place, how to deal with that. Um, there were some things that, you know, one group, again, there's not a right or wrong here. One group thought we should dismiss buses first, get those kids out of here, then let parents and the driving kids. I'm not gonna say we agree necessarily yet on that. Again, not a right or wrong. But I just want you aware that we've had, finally had our debriefing, had a good conversation, had a good meeting, thanked everyone immensely, you know, because all the responding groups. Um, we, uh, we will have, they, they're gonna do some more training in our building. We don't have days set up. Um, but the offer's out there and, and, um, Josh has, and we'll talk more in just a minute, been to some trainings and they're working. Um, we have an invite to go to an active shooter training. We got two seats, won't cost us anything in, where's it at again? Um, Jay Bill Costro, I forget. What, is it Lake Superior School? It's Jay?
Jay's at Two Harbers.
Two Harbers, okay. Their county is bringing a group in on that. So we were fortunate to be given two seats, so we will have two people going to that December ninth, I think. I don't know what we're gonna learn. Uh, uh, Josh is, uh, just went through that with the group. Um, so he's not gonna go again to that, but, um, I'm gonna go and I think, um, Tim and if not Tim, we'll bring someone else. So, um, that's where we're at with that, unless anyone has any questions there.
Was there, in part of that discussion, I don't know, have you heard much from families about how, how, any response that they had about how things were communicated to them? Whether it was pickup and things, is there anything evaluated in that area and planning for future events?
Not, I mean, not major. I mean, there's some, we met with staff right afterwards, got some input. And again, there, there's things I think we agree. There's things, you know, there were, I mean, people who want more information instantly. While some of that is gonna happen, some isn't, you know, and, and that's, I don't know if we're ever gonna come to, even staff, you know, some staff want info a lot quicker. And I understand that. There's some I think we can do, but these situations are different too. You know, I think we made strides in communication. That was one of the things that when, for whatever, Mike, uh, Koschik from the police department was not available. So Parent Headland is actually kind of the person that, you know, was, I'm gonna say in command from law enforcement. We made this decision very early that they were not gonna put anything on their website until, you know, our Facebook, until we'd communicated. Cause if you recall before, there were some things they were getting out before. And, and, and so again, I think that was a learning, you know, piece. There was, um, some gains. We had, you know, whole room checked over to the arena. People felt safe getting over there. There was some of the checkout process that, um, could went better. Um, but again, it doesn't necessarily mean it would have sped things up. And I'm not looking to be fast, you know? I mean, I know as parents, you probably want your kids as soon as possible, but there's pieces that we have to be better. Um, and so we will, um, hopefully boost more training as time goes on. Um, hopefully in Maine, if that's the right way to look at it, where we don't need it. But on the re, um, the other piece that I'm just gonna throw, we, we did have some decent discussion on what's gonna happen if we truly believe it is a hoax down the road, you, you know, because, um, they had some pretty credible evidence, you, you know, that this. And, you know, what's gonna happen over time, you know, and so, so again, I'm not gonna throw too much out on the table here, but we did have some of that discussion too of how we may deal with it. And again, we would, you know, let people know. I mean, parents may still want their kids, you, you know, and that's gonna be their choice. But there may be some, a time when we don't, you know, dismiss. And then again, it's gonna be transparent. We're not gonna get a threat, not letting anyone know.
You know, I read a report by CISA recently, which is the government agency, um, for cybersecurity. And they're actually, uh, looking into this because, um, some of these calls are coming from overseas now. And it's like foreign terrorism, you know?
They, they figure that's where this came from.
And it's just, so now it's a cyber, cause how do you stop people from calling? You know, how do you even do that? Nobody knows. And so now they're looking into it, but it's so far behind. Like, how do you catch up to that?
So, so anyway, Jen, I don't know if that.
Yeah.
Just a heads up on that, um, again, it's gonna take a little bit, it's getting used to putting things in these certain areas. But, um, I am just about to a point where, or I should say Casey can upload. If you look on our website where we have mission, it's all gonna be on there by next month. We've, again, got things ready.
For the strategic plan.
Correct. And there's different pieces like our missions on there and gold and different things. So that will be updated. So that, that is a good thing. Um, I, I put under D. School Resource Officer Discussion. And, um, if you go on, one of the questions that was asked was for a, um, called a job description. And if you look, there's an attachment in there that Mike provided us that outlines some of quote unquote, general duties. Um, I'm gonna be honest with you, um, every month that goes by, we get more and more support for having Josh in the building. And I guess what I'm gonna, I guess, ask the board to consider in December is making a commitment to a certain extent for that position. Because as I mentioned to you before, um, you know, they, they're gonna need to know because of an opening coming up. Um, and I think we need to seriously consider in this day and age. And I mean, neither, again, there isn't a right or wrong answer. Um, and again, how far we go and what he can do, or I shouldn't say he could, again, it's the position it can do, cause there's never a guarantee. Um, I, I hope it is Josh for at least a certain amount of time. He's doing great things. I think he has, um, some drive. Again, if you want testimonials from whether it's Tim or other people, um, but I think we're not gonna make a commitment. And it's just like any other budget item, you know, if I asked you, hey, you know, we need to order another bus for next year, you know, and I'm just, I'm not asking that right now. But we do go ahead, you know, and yeah, we're gonna support something. And this is one of those, and I, I.
Right. So now we've got, you know, the cyber stuff and then we've got the security officer's stuff. And, and we have to talk as well about what's gonna give on the other end.
Correct. And we're gonna have to find out, but again, like I say, it's, it's something, even though we're not too budgeted time, I mean, where we're at and what he's been able to help with in the, what, three months, two months, whatever we've been in session, um.
Well, I, maybe now, maybe now is the time for, for me to say, I, I just started doing volunteer reading in the elementary school. And let me tell you, that's cool. I, there, there is so much noise with all those kids to try to sound out their words and learn. And, eh, I mean, I just feel really sorry for each and every teacher on the elementary level. And so I'm really worried about trying to keep those numbers down. I mean, even at where they're at right now, it's really noisy in those classrooms. So I, I, you know, I'm really fearful of where money is coming from. I think the security officer is great. And I think you have to have your cybersecurity costs are gonna go up, but we just have to be really careful about what we're gonna do.
I, I understand. But like I say, I'm, I'm just forewarning, I'm gonna bring something. And I don't mean that a bet. Maybe it's not supportive, but we're gonna make a decision so that, hey, the city can plan and Josh personally can plan, you know? And like you say, we've talked to an officer before. I mean, I'm not saying it's right, wrong. There's some places that have them, some places that don't. Um, I don't know if there's more you want from, you, you know, like you say, Michael comes speak to you, I can have Tim and whoever else you want, you know, what they've seen so far. Um, but we're gonna have to make a, um.
I don't think there's any question that it's, everybody thinks it's a great idea.
Well, but again, we have to make some tough decisions, you know? There's some great ideas that we haven't supported, you, you know? I mean, and unfortunately, those are the tough decisions. Jen, and you?
I agree. There's lots of great ideas that she could support. Um, and I think I've heard really a lot of positive things about this one too. I appreciate that Chief Koschik made the job description, cause that, I think, gives us a better idea. When it comes to time, if it's in my time with the board, if it comes to the board, I would like to know like how, maybe this, this, maybe a con, the contract specifics of like who pays what? And what are the hour commitments and, and who is supervising and how is the, you know, like those types of things, just for clarity. So that, again, cause you know, where it might be just an extremely exceptional relationship right now with Josh, no matter who's in that position. You want the school to have their accountability and.
Sorry, I, I can tell you we already have a draft.
Yeah. So that's what I will look forward to before the next step. This was helpful to me, I think, cause this shaped it better for me, understanding. Um, and I do think it's helpful when you guys talk about what did that look like? It doesn't, without giving any specifics that you can't give, but just like feeling safe is one thing, but that's, means different things to different people. And there's some people who don't feel safe with a police officer in, in present, but I don't know if our community is one of those communities that would struggle with that. So, but it's something to be thoughtful about. So yes, I think that understanding how that person has, now how that role has helped our community is helpful, even if we're all already in support of it, you know, with that shaping up the job.
And so just to give you a little, uh, little noodle, if that's the right word, um, the, the draft of a, a agreement, again, which I'm sure came from another, you know, Mike did draft about himself, um, you know, it's been borrowed and taken, whatever. But for the most part, we contract, would contract with the city for the service. They are the employer, um, which means obviously if there's discipline, anything like that. That being said, he would, you know, an essence report, not only to, I'm just gonna say Mike there, but, you know, the principals here or myself. And, you know, we would have, um, it would be mainly contract hours during the school day, um, with some flexibility for school events or, you know, variety of things. Obviously, there is a caveat language. If there's a emergency locally, you know, he could obviously be part of their team, which I don't think we would, you know? Um, and then obviously summer piece is not our deal, you know, that's, that's part of theirs, but they're looking for some commitments so that they know. Um, I, I didn't bring it, uh, I, I think Mike and I were talking somewhere and again, it's yet for us to have a conversation. You know, are we willing to support fifty percent of it, fifty-five percent of it, not a hundred percent, because obviously we don't need, um, they would have, you know, three months in the summer, which, so I mean, seventy-five percent would be us committing to, for the most part, a full school year piece. Um, and again, they haven't said that they want, um, you know, take on some of that either. It's just a conversation that we have to come somewhere and are we gonna support it all or not? In the past, we have not supported. And again, not saying in a bad way, we just haven't had enough. Um, and so, um.
Is there any, for this or the cyber costs, the cyber risk costs that are going up, is there any? Has there been any looking to see if there's any funds that can support this, getting either of these programs better supported?
The, the resource officer, we have not found anything. There, there is, there's a huge amount of money coming out for cyber stuff. It's, it's yet, the ink is not dry yet, whether we're gonna be able to qualify or, or get any of the, I'm gonna call it grant money for that. We, we're watching it, you know, and it's not even out. Um, and, and I think, I'll, I'll be honest, it's on a couple legislative platforms as well from head organizations. Because that is, when you come, um, that is something that's affecting every district, you know? It doesn't matter how big you are or how small you are. Um, and who knows where things are gonna go legislatively, obviously. Um, that's yet to be seen here, but.
Well, both of those, both cyber and.
But I'm just saying it's something that any school could take extra money and put it into something, I mean, right now. So I mean, it would be a fair way if it's for people or whatever, and this has to be used now, um, whether they're gonna come up with, and as Ted was talking, you know, the criteria of you need A, B, and C, I'm guessing that's coming in D, E, and F, you know, because it's not out there. You know, we, we are insured, but three months from now, we might not be if you don't have X and Y in place. And all of it costs money, unfortunately. Well, most of it costs money, you, you know?
And at that point, we won't get to say yes or no. I, I mean, it's, it'll just be a formality, cause we, we have to do it if we wanna be insured.
When you can see how at a thirteen million dollar budget, that number is just growing technology in all areas with insurance, uh, events, new devices, keeping up networks, all of it. I can see how that's getting a ch, bigger chunk for all districts.
Gotta go back to zero to one.
Okay.
Uh, just a reminder, uh, in, in this, in those, um, when, when, okay, we have a truth in taxation at the December meeting. But recall that can't start until six o'clock. So somehow, if we start at five fifteen and we're done before six, we have to stay and do the truth in taxation part of the meeting at, at least at six or following our meeting. So throw that out. Um, for F., MSBA Leadership Conference is coming up on January twelfth and thirteenth, okay? And I throw it out there because I did reserve some rooms. And I throw it out there because I did reserve some rooms. But by December eighth or ninth, we have to let them know or there's a a cancellation fee. So I guess I'm asking, I don't need an answer right now. But if any of the board members or new board members are going, wanna go to the School Board Association Leadership Conference, typically we, I'm just throwing it out, typically we leave Wednesday afternoon, evening, three, four o'clock, go down, we stay then Wednesday night. It starts Thursday morning, eight thirty, something like that, I don't remember, it's all day Thursday. And then till till noon Friday, and we're usually back five, six o'clock that that Friday evening. So I guess I'm just gonna leave it.
This isn't appropriate to say, but I know Tina's here, you should really consider, you'll get you'll get a lot out of that training if you can go to it. They have all kinds of, I mean, you gotta do, you gotta do like two initial trainings anyways.
And she's already signed up for the phase training.
Oh, yeah, oftentimes they do them there and stuff like that, and they have a lot of other good training there too. I I found it super valuable when I first got onto the boards, so.
And for Joanne and Emily and and Bruce, because COVID didn't happen, it's really wonderful to go. I think it's a really great experience for the board itself as a group. And then for what you get out of it, so.
Can we put, and I'm just gonna throw it out, Monday the twenty eighth, a week from today, I mean, can we put a deadline out? I mean, for people to figure out if they want, you know, want and can't.
Yeah, I mean, now you've got the twelfth and thirteenth, but I thought it was, we leave the night before, so really it's the eleventh.
Correct, the conference is on the twelfth, unless I took the dates.
We leave the eleventh and come back.
Right.
So Rox, Tony, but but I'm just saying, everyone doesn't have to give me an answer tonight, I'm just throwing it out. If we say Monday the twenty eighth, at the end of the working day, I will ensure, excuse me, not only we have enough rooms, but then the registration for anyone. And again, anyone has questions, by all means, either ask me or any of the other members that have went, and we'll go from there.
Yep.
And that's all I have at this point, unless.
Okay, let's see, all right, any other questions with Kevin?
Oh, no, I do have one more, I apologize. The the administrative committee is right now set to be, as of for the next month, Ted, Jen and Tony. What's your wish on my contract? Do you wanna start now, do you wanna wait, and I'm looking at Rox as board chairs. I mean, either we negotiate and get it done in the next month, or we might as well wait until see who the new committee is.
I can do it in a month if if time permits for everybody else, I mean, it's mostly the same stuff. Well, I guess you'll have some demands or requests, so to speak.
I mean, if you wanna meet, you wanna hear a whirl, I'm not against it.
That's fine.
Okay.
Remind me, how did, when we, when we talked, when we negotiated this summer, how is that different? Didn't we also talk about your contract?
No, we we were a year ago.
What was it, that last one?
Well, we did it two, well, well, no, yeah, we, last year was the first year, this is the second year, we only did a two-year agreement. And so the same thing coming up, you gotta keep in mind, it seems like we just got done, but this summer we will start negotiations again. Because they were contracts for twenty-one to twenty-three. Now, that being said, the teachers did two two-year agreements, principal did two two-year agreements, so those two are done. But the paras and five-ten will start again, you know, for the twenty-three, twenty-five contract, so.
So did we do that in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two?
I'm guessing last school year, the beginning.
When did we do our those two-year, two contracts, two two-year contracts?
We finished beginning the last school year sometime, so the twenty-one.
Okay, so it was twenty twenty-one, okay.
No.
We had discussions in twenty twenty-one.
No, twenty-one, twenty-two, I'm guessing in September, October, somewhere we settled.
Okay.
So that was the first year, last year, and now this is the second year, but we're covered all the way through June.
Right, so I'm just off a year.
Wow, no, it's it's just.
I thought it was just this last summer.
Wow, no, exactly, the summer before we started and then we finished into the school year.
I can, if if you guys wanna meet, I can meet.
Then I'll I'll set, I'll try and give the three of you, again, it's Ted, Jen and Tony, and we'll try and have them submit to the board in December. If we don't, we'll have to finish.
Tell them, quit asking for stuff too, let's ask them for stuff. Okay, the next thing is Beth's report.
She provided, again, I think everyone can read it, and she will be done here in December, be licensed, so she, which is another thing. And she's actually in a class meeting or whatever tonight, so.
What did you say?
She's she'll be licensed in December, so she should.
I was gonna say, she's.
She does.
Okay, good, good, yeah.
I didn't have a report attached to mine, so I don't.
Oh, did you not? We'll we'll get it attached, sorry.
Yeah, I just figured you could send it, send it later.
Sorry.
Okay, do it, and then committee reports, okay, that would be Beth's again, committee and rec commission, nobody's here.
Rec commission, we talked about, again, needing youth coaches for winter sports. So if you can share the posts that we put online, that would be great.
Yes.
And still in the discussions between with the city and school and rec and how that is gonna work out, yeah.
Okay, do it, anything else? Right, motion to adjourn, so moved.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.